... meeting for the city of Bonny Lake for July the 11th, 2023. Very first thing we do is salute the flag. Councilmember McLemons didn't have to sit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll plate?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLemons.
Present.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All right, and it's good to welcome Chief Culler here to join us today. I've seen you in about a year.
Mayor. Oh, wow.
Welcome, welcome.
All right, then there seems that there are no agenda modifications. We do have an appointment, Madam Clerk.
This is motion M 23110. The council motion would be to ratify the mayor's appointment of Eric Bass and Alexis Mensen to the Arts Commission with terms expiring on April 6, 2026.
Salute. Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving A B 23110, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposed? The motion has been passed by unanimous vote. And now, seeing that there's no public hearing, we'll go into citizen commentary. Oh, there. Decker, I got a little nervous there. I didn't see you. I didn't know whether you were here or not.
There he is.
Okay. This is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those who are attending virtually. You'll need to turn on your video and your microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and then move to the virtual comments afterwards. You have five minutes. If you approach the dyes, please state your name and address.
Councilman, I'm past Councilmember Dan Decker. I live at 12170th Street, East Bonny Lake, Washington. As children, our parents told us it was wrong to lie. In 1963, the Supreme Court ruled in Brady versus Maryland. In effect, the police are not allowed to deceive, mislead, lie, hold back evidence, earn any way, interfere with the truth in any form before, during, or after a person has been arrested and sick. Interfering with due process, that would be the Fourth Amendment. A surprising event occurred in 1969 at the hands of our faithful Supreme Court. In Fraser versus Coke, 1969, police may lie to the public for any reason. Judges know police lie. People think police tell the truth. The police do lie. What lies are most often told to the public? Police can lie about having incriminating evidence against you. Police can lie and say they can get your probation or reduce sentence. No, they can help you go to jail forever. Can police lie about having an eyewitness to a crime? Police can lie about their ability to get a search warrant. Police can lie and tell you a conversation is off the record. The Supreme Court has made the police above the law. The police can and do lie. If the public isn't truthful to the police, the public can be charged with a crime. Exception. State of Washington versus, I believe it's Palla, P-A-L-L-A, soon. Versus the state of Washington. Minorities can lie to the police. If occasions lie, off to jail we go. It appears a separation but not equal thing. Jim Crow is a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. And I believe that a Jim Crow issue has occurred here in the Fourteenth Amendment. And separate but equal does not work ever. I just went off script a little bit. Attorneys say the best way to encounter a police officer lying is to request an attorney. Take the Fifth Amendment and say nothing to the police if you have been detained or arrested. Why is it wrong for the police to lie? People are tricked into confessing. Believe it or not, about 27% of the people who are convicted of a crime who confessed to one were innocent because of the trickery of the police. Here's one for protective services. The police are allowed to lie to children. Oh, that's right, the police are above the law. Okay, thank you very much, counsel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Is there anybody else for the good of the order? Oh, yes, please go ahead.
Respect, but I haven't had any bad encounters with the police officer, so I... Service very much.
Thank you.
Becky Conley, Lake Taps. And it's a generalized question, I guess, and you aren't entitled to answer me, but I would consider myself to be a pretty good liar in the shopping business. Going into retail stores locally here.
These young kids watch us walking out with twelve packs of beer and potato chips, not even really making any attempt to hide. Just kind of curious if there's any statistics. Like, I would say that Costco probably has a very low crime rate because of their policies on checking receipts before they go out, but just wondering if there's any encouragement that the council offers to our local retailers on maybe...
That's my question.
All right, thank you, Ms. Conley. Do we have anybody else for the good of the order? Okay, that will end our in-person commentary. Now we'll start those that are virtual. Is there anybody online? You will have five minutes, and please state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, seeing nobody come forward with that, I believe that now we will disable all video and microphone for those attending virtually. And next will come committee reports. Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will next meet on Tuesday, July 25th, at 5:00 p.m. on the second floor, and the public is invited.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Next would be Community Development Committee, please.
Mr. Mayor, the Community Development Committee will meet next week also, so the public is invited.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. And Public Safety Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety met tonight. We had our monthly reports from fire with nearly 60 fires over the Fourth of July weekend. We had an update from the police with two times, two times last month, they had MSU training on the boat, which is great for the hot weather that's coming up and just making sure that our officers are prepared in the event of a water emergency. We had a report from the prosecutor's office, including 491, 411 court hearings and 50 arraignments. And we had a report from the emergency management that came through via email to everyone. And the major upcoming event for emergency management is a July 27th East Pierce Emergency Coalition. What do we got here? A functional exercise on mass evacuation should the mountain blow and how are we going to handle everyone coming up our hill? We had a discussion on an interlocal agreement for the city of Bonny Lake with the Southern School District. That is for our school resource officer. We moved that to the July 27th consent agenda. We had a discussion on parking meters, which will be coming back to us next week during a workshop. And we briefly discussed a firework ban that didn't go anywhere, but we reviewed our minutes, approved them, and we adjourned.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Evans. Was that 411 arraignments in one month?
Yes, month of June.
Oh, very good. Might have to come down and help them. All right, don't see any other reports. So now we have the consent agendas. Are there a motion to adopt? All moved. Second. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda for July the 11th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that it was passed unanimously. We do have a full council issue. Madam Clerk.
This is A B 23108, ordinance D 23108. The council motion would be to amend Chapter 13.04.070 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code relating to system development charge adjustments. Amend subsection D 2 of section 13.04.070 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code to update system development charges and make housekeeping amendments, provide for servability, corrections and implementation, and establish an effective date.
So moved. Second. Do we have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember McLemons.
Yeah, so I appreciate the staff's work on this and where we've come through this. I'd just like to remind counsel that we've had many discussions with the consultant, FCS Group regarding this. I took away from the last meeting, for the most part, that there was a large amount of professional judgment that was used to come to the methodology and some of the data points that were used for the study. I wasn't convinced that there was any ironclad approach to it, other than they're the consultant and they know what's best. Based on that, I can't support this because physics tells me that things cost more now than they did in 2014. It also tells me it's going to cost more in the next few years. So lowering the cost of hooking up to our system just never, I still don't understand how we were justifying that. We're not just lowering the cost by a couple thousand dollars. We're lowering it by half, right? With the enormous pressure in our state from organizations to fix the missing middle and make multifamily housing the norm in cities, that makes this even more perilous for us to do because we're going to wind up with a large number of multifamily units and we're going to get half of the money that we should get from them to hook up to our water system. So I can't support this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember McLemons. Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Mr. McLemons about what he said and the background to that. And I'm, over the years, we've always been, had this the right amount where we need to develop our city and our growth. But we've also had a lot of discussion that should be a lower rate. I'm concerned about anything that might happen to the city because if we don't approve this tonight, what might be in the future? So I'm torn in both ways and, and I'm not fully decided yet, but I think we should pass this tonight. I don't want us to get involved with any lawsuits or anything. But again, my concern about where we're going to end up in a couple of years, this is too low. We've always tried and we've always been one of the higher ones, the county, ever since I've been on the council, and we have a lot of going on. But as I talked to Mr. Johnstone today in quite detail, things have changed and they're not, the costs aren't the same as they were 10 years ago when I appeared again on the council. And we can see how this goes next year or two, and then we can make the change if we find this is not, was the right decision. But I'll probably support this tonight because I just don't want to see any issues come up with litigation or anything might have to, so there's my concern on it.
Thank Councilmember Watson. Any further discussion on the matter? Oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I share the same sentiment. I feel like with all of the numbers and the explanations that were coming out, it's exactly what you were saying, is it just doesn't quite add up that it could just be cut in half and then that's not going to affect things financially. And I know there were lots of explanations, certainly heard and listened to everything. I am also torn in the same way and not quite decided yet either. Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Oh, Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would echo Councilmember McLemons' statement. He did a very good job of laying out all the details, is the way I understand it, for the many years dealing with the water system there. You know, in the end, it wouldn't be that big of a deal to me either way because clearly the city can, you know, choose to charge a lot less than what they possibly could charge because this particular realm of charges is in that really legalistic regulatory format where you have to be really careful about exactly what you're doing. And I think that's what Councilmember McLemons is referencing, is there's a lot of nuance in the numbers in the background. You would think that it's just an exact equation, but it's not because there's some interpretation of how those numbers come out when they start talking about a storage system and they're qualifying that as an actual source. That doesn't really work out too well. At any rate, you know, I wouldn't mind going either way with it. I just have a problem where the city sits, that the city's looking at producing a lot of multifamily homes in the near future. So making an error, because it's not a choice, making an error now with this basically is uniquely going to give a very large developer a lot of money in the form of millions of dollars in charges that aren't going to be attributed to that development. Those charges, of course, are going to be borne by the citizens of Bonny Lake, and I've long been told and heard from the citizens, either rightly or wrongly, that they don't want, you know, the new folks to be able to not pay their fair share, and this is what a system development charge is. So I'm opting with Councilmember McLemons, is going to support his particular position on this, and I'll have to pass on this one tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Oh, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern, I guess, with this whole thing is it's been before us several times. We've been told by the attorneys, by the consultants and whatnot, that we can expect essentially to be sued if we don't pass this eventually. And so, you know, you can get into the numbers. I agree with you. I get where you're coming from, but I think we are setting ourselves up for a bad fall. And I think that is not the wisest use of taxpayers' money. So therefore, I will be supporting it.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Oh, Councilmember Evans.
I have a question for legal. What is the vote requirement for passage?
It's an ordinance, so it would be four.
Four, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
If I could discuss legal risk, we can do that in executive session.
Okay.
Do we have any further discussion on the matter?
Yeah.
Last, but not least, Councilmember Fullerton.
So I'm just, I felt like, kind of this whole time, like we've been told that we need to lower the rates because if we don't lower these connection fees, then we are above where we're supposed to be as far as pricing goes. And so these are the new prices that we're supposed to be paying. However, you know, Councilmember McLemons makes a wonderful point that the costs have gone up. And was it 20 years ago or 10 years ago or something like that? 12? When we did this and these, these were the prices that we were given 12 years ago that we've been using. And now that the economy, everything's going up. Inflation is causing all of the prices to go up. Supply chain is going up. So how can we lower these connection fee rates and say that this is the new, that this is, that this is what we have to have, that we need to lower them more than half or almost half? Just doesn't make sense because everything is going up. And then, as Councilmember Swatman spoke, you know, we're potentially giving developers a a way to go ahead and connect and save millions and millions of dollars, which is going to possibly even make them want to put more units in than were approved. I don't know. I'm just, I'm struggling with this one. I really am. Because I don't, I don't know where these numbers came from. You know, they're saying, these are the numbers and we need to have these prices. Otherwise, we're set up for potential lawsuit, but I just don't understand how these numbers went down so far. And I haven't been able to get a good enough explanation for me to go ahead and go for this. Is, is anybody allowed to answer questions without actually having to go into executive session? Or do we need to? I'm not sure.
Well, we do have Councilmember Watson.
Well, as I mentioned today, I talked to Mr. Johnstone. He's on the screen here now. And times have changed since they were 10, 12 years ago. Developments were a lot stronger way back then. We had a lot more homes coming in. The amount of availability of property, as you know, has come down dramatically. We do have a few developments come in, which are quite large. We give them a huge reduction in prices. But times have changed, as talked about, and that this is more of a reasonable price for what our future development will be in the city. We can afford this. That's why I lean, I'm going to vote for this tonight. And Mr. Johnson wants to tag in this. I'll let him fill in a few gaps.
All right, thank you. Mr. Johnstone?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick point, just so that it's clear, what Councilmember Watson and I were talking about is, and first of all, let me say, I totally respect where the council is coming from, and I find it odd that as staff, I'm kind of on the opposite side of the argument I normally like to be on. And so this is, this is a little, a little different than normal. But, so I appreciate all the comments. The only thing I would add to it is that from a project perspective, we, the analysis for the SDC cost goes out over a certain period of time, and the list of projects that we had in the past versus the list of projects we have now over the next, Sherry can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we were looking at the six-year timeframe. Those projects are different. So while costs are going up, on the whole, I believe our project cost total is actually lower because we don't, other than these reservoir projects, have that many additional big projects out on the horizon. So when you take the present value of the system, you add the future project cost, and then you divide all that by the source capacity. And I know that's where Councilmember Swatman is mentioning the peaking storage tank. That's how you come up with the number. So if that project cost, one half of the top part, the numerator, that equation, is actually lower, then you're going to, and then your source capacity is higher, the denominator, you're going to end up with a lower number. So I guess I say all this to try and assuage some concerns of the councils that we're not going to be collecting enough through SDCs. FCS did look at our future project costs, and they inflated them accordingly. And we believe that in doing that, they've properly accounted for the project costs that we'll see over the term of these, that these increases are proposed for. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnstone. Ms. Ryerson, are you going to be correcting Mr. Johnstone? Okay, your peers are laid, Mr. Johnstone. Okay. All right, Councilmember Evans.
In just layman's terms, we front-loaded everything, and that's why there's less cost on the back end. Is that safe to say? We, the majority of the projects that were on that original scope are already completed, and now we're dwindling down to the smaller end of the things, and the larger stuff isn't. We've already figured out ways to figure it out.
I think I would rephrase that to say that the last time we looked at SDCs, we had more expensive projects on the horizon. As we're reevaluating them again, the projects that we have on the horizon are not as large and therefore not quite as expensive as they were before, even when accounting for inflation.
Thank you.
Well, we just took out a loan.
Well, that was a smart thing to do.
Yeah, I understand, but...
But that was for water, right?
Okay.
So you're talking apples and oranges.
Apples and oranges.
And Ms. Ryerson, I saw you turn your microphone on. Okay. All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
Well, I was curious if Sherry had any just final thoughts.
No, I agree with pretty much everything Ryan said. In a non-engineering, simplest way that I can kind of explain this, I would say it would be like you have this much of a thing you want to buy, right? And the initial 14,000 residents paid for three quarters of that thing. You only have a little portion left, kind of like what you were saying, Councilmember Evans. You kind of front-loaded it, if you will. So from a non-engineering mind, yes, I would totally agree with you. It's like, and that's why your costs would go down, because you don't have that big thing anymore. You only have a small portion left of what we can serve on the capacity. Does that kind of simplify it a little bit?
And more residents.
Exactly, exactly.
Less to pay for, more people to pay for it.
Right, okay. Councilmember Baldwin.
Okay, so then, just to make sure before I make a decision, in regards to SDCs, yes, there were new projects essentially that were being created, and then now we just have a small piece left. However, do SDCs also pay for all of the, I guess, maintenance and just upkeep of these things? Not at all, right? Okay.
And they're not even intended, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, they're not even intended to pay for the entire system. They're paying to buy into the system.
Yeah.
So what the system has cost and what it would cost to buy into now is different from it was 12 years ago. So I get it, and I'm with Ryan on the same thing. You know, fundamentally, as a city employee, I'd never want to reduce anything cost-wise, but this is, this is the situation we're in.
All right, Mr. Johnstone, now, do you want to correct Ms. Ryerson?
No. I'll let it pass this time.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnstone. Councilmember McLemons.
Yeah, thank you. Though, while I, I almost find that argument compelling, I would offer that, you know, in a society that is overwhelmingly infatuated with the term equity, I find it ironic that we're, we just built the system on the backs of a whole bunch of single-family homeowners, and now we're going to let a whole bunch of multifamily units reap the benefit. It just seems inequitable, right, to me to do that? Because now all these people that bought in for a community that they expect a certain quality of will now see that quality and that character potentially change, and not only that, but we're giving them a great deal while we're doing that. So it just, it just doesn't make sense to me. I can't look at a constituent and say, you know, I've been, I've been having this discussion. Yes, I want to lower water rates. I want to lower your water rates. You've already paid, when you bought your house, for this development cost. Do you want me to make somebody's development cost less? Because fundamentally, I think it costs too much to build in Bonny Lake, and I would love to lower all the fees. The problem is, we've charged these fees since 2014. How many houses have paid this fee? And now we're going to cut the fee? And, and I don't, I don't believe there's any mistakes in the 2014 charges, right? And I don't believe there was any legal, compelling legal algorithm that was required according to Chris Gonzalez. The numerator and denominator would determine through professional judgment. So it's my judgment that I don't want to punish single-family homeowners so that I can reward multifamily housing. It's really that simple.
All right.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember McLemons, Councilmember Watson.
Only thoughts about that, I agree with you, but we've grown. We have a lot more built into our city. Since I'm in the council, we've put in several pumping stations. We're not doing that now. Those things we didn't have back then, we had to pay for, along with a sewer and all that to make that happen. And so the areas that we're able to grow into that were large lots and so on, those have been built up. What we have left now is behind, safely, of course, a few spots like that, but we got single homes on larger lots, we'll probably be taking those down, putting multifamily homes on those, wish they would have been from those, but we've already got the infrastructure into it so they can develop those properties. While we charge them more, we don't need to spend that kind of money. Back then, we were struggling to get those things done because we had so much going on. And Dan remembers that back then, too, what we're, all we were doing then. So now it's slowing down from what I realized from what Ryan's talking about and what we need in the future. You don't want to keep putting money in the bank that belongs to development possibly where, because we're not going to use it. And that's not right, is the problem with that.
Deputy McCarter and then Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I'm going to change your mind. I see what you're, I see your point, but I would just offer that this is keeping up with the times, and the times change. And we very few times get an opportunity to actually lower a tax or a rate on anything in government. And when we do get the opportunity to do so, I think responsibly, I can't pass that up.
And, Councilmember.
And just in all fairness, I have to take the opposite question in hand. If we had raised all these, if we had raised all this money off the, off the backs of multifamily development over the last 10 years, 20 years, would you feel the same if we were doing this on single-family homes?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
If the single-family homes came in, second.
Yeah, if we were lowering these rates now for single-family homes, that, you know, that's, and that's, and that's fair. that's, and that's, and that's fair. That's, that's what I would hope you would answer. But, you know, I look at, you know, you talk about equity and, you know, your, your answer is, is what, you know, someone that believes in that would, would say. So I, I appreciate the honesty on that.
Uh, Mr. Vodapich, I do have a question, uh, about this. When we were, uh, when we were sued on this issue back in, back in the late aughts and we lost, our insurance did not cover this, right? We, the, the city had to pay this out.
Correct.
Okay, so we, i- if we in, indeed get sued on this, then the city would be paying the damages, yes?
Correct.
Okay.
If they were successful.
Yeah.
All right. Are we ready to take it to a vote?
Wonderful. So I just, bottom line, like, this doesn't affect any budget and this isn't going to cause, um, like, problems in the future. So should there need to be some maintenance come up on, on something, you know, like the pump stations or whatever. So this is not going to affect our ability to be able to make repairs, build new pump stations if we need them. So this is all part of a planned project and we just have less projects now. And so we need to lower these rates in order to, uh, make it.
So the, um, maintenance wouldn't be covered by SDCs. And what, uh, what could affect your budget if Ryan had an emergency failure of some sort? But again, um, that wouldn't have been budgeted for either way. It's not going to be in the, uh, the plan that Ryan has provided to FCS. Um, the one thing I continue to go back to that, uh, Mr. Gonzalez had said was we have better information now than we did then. And that's what also changed the rates is because we have better information than we did back in, you know, twelve years ago. So.
All right, Councilmember Evans.
And just to piggyback off of that, the, this is a enterprise fund. So our, the general budget that we do, uh, they're, they're completely separate. You've, you've, there's no crossover there. So even if we charged zero or fifty thousand dollars, it wouldn't affect what our general fund budget is for maintenance and operation and anything else within, within that, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
I just, I just want to make sure that just the information is clear in regards to this lawsuit, I guess that happened before. Um, were you, were you here then when that happened? Can you elaborate?
I was here when Reagan was shot.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I just, I want to make sure that, you know, I know it's, it can be scary when someone says, oh, the city was sued and like, you know, they bankrupt the city or whatever it is. I, I might, I'm curious to know what occurred in the lawsuit. What was the final judgment? Were we paying out lots of money or was it something else?
All right. Oh, oh, go ahead.
So, you know, they sued us, rightly so, because we were charging more than we should for a particular service, right?
Yeah.
So they had already, I think they, I don't know whether they'd already paid it or not or what have you, but, you know, obviously you have to pay them the difference. Because we said, you know, you owe us X, whatever, two million dollars for Palermo hookup fees or whatever it was. And then the city's like, oh, well, okay, I guess we're, you were right, Judge. We can't charge them that much. We get to write them a big check for the difference.
Okay. The difference in basically what was charged.
Difference in some lawyer fees or what have you. It's, it's not like, you know, McDonald's where they sue the city for five billion dollars.
Right.
And the city has to write them a huge check.
Right, okay. Okay.
Same kind of thing.
Yeah.
And they will do this in this case too. If you get this wrong too, you know, with this large developments, you're not, single-family homeowners are not going to sue you. It's the large developments that are going to, like, feed.
Yeah, that are going to.
They got millions of dollars, you know. A homeowner is not going to sue the city for a five thousand dollar.
And, uh, Ms. Robertson.
Yeah, I was just going to confirm, um, the, the judgment was for almost two million dollars. Judgment interest, judgment interest was also charged and the city paid its own legal fees. And, um, as was said before, there was no insurance coverage for that. And that was just one developer.
On top of the two million?
On top of the two million, there was, there was attorney's fees, the city's bearing its own attorney's fees.
Mm-hmm.
Plus there was interest from the dime of payment until it was rendered. So if they were, if they paid the wrong amount in, you know, two thousand and six and the judgment came down in two thousand and nine, the city had to give them the wrong, you know, the difference plus interest from two thousand and six.
Gotcha.
And that's twelve percent a year. So that's not, um, it's, it can add up.
Okay.
That's just one developer.
And that was close to fifteen, twenty years ago that we're talking?
Yes, correct. And it was, yeah, like I said, the, the, the initial judgment was almost just, just under two million.
And that would affect your budget, um, because that is not anything I have accounted for clearly. So, um, and that would come out of your, your water fund. Your water rates would end up paying for that.
And if, just hypothetically, if we're, if we sued this, the case that were cited and all this was basically our case, that, that would, that would come up in court, they would, in layman's terms, just kind of throw that back at us?
Yeah, the, the former Bonny, was a Bonny Lake Court of Appeals decision and it was based on not having, um, professionally prepared estimates, um, and just kind of taking a stab at it. Now we do have professionally prepared estimates.
Okay, and with, if we do have, all right. Well, do we have, uh, Councilmember McLemmons?
Yeah, so let's, let's have that discussion then. Um, I was going to bring up, you know, what the real finding was. Because when I read the finding, what I thought I understood was it wasn't so much that we were overcharging, but that the mechanism by which we determined the charges, one, there were errors in the material that was used, and two, there was no professional. So can we say the same thing for the twenty fourteen charges?
No, because we had FCS.
Yeah, they were prepared by a professional.
Okay, so the, the current charges are based on, uh, consultant giving us data and we believe that data is correct?
Actually, no, because the record, the recommendation from the personal consultant that time was to reduce them by about eleven hundred and the council chose not to do that at that time.
Okay, that was in twenty fourteen?
I, I would have to go back.
Twenty seventeen, I think, yeah.
It was twenty seventeen.
I think it was twenty seventeen.
So the twenty seventeen recommendation from the FCS group was, I believe, lower it about eleven hundred dollars and the council at that time chose not to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any, okay. Okay, we are ready to, uh, take it to a vote, I believe. Um, all in favor of ordinance D twenty-three one oh eight? Say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I believe that is five to two. Correct me if I'm wrong. I, I, I don't do math either. Uh, Ms. Ryerson, is that right? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The, um, ordinance has passed five to two. All right, seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. And no closed session.